Good evening, welcome to the final town hall meeting of 2025. We appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Our formats, what we kind of do is I'll talk through some stuff I want to talk about and then we're going to turn it over to you. You come up to the microphone, just state your name and address and ask whatever questions on your mind, whether it's related to anything I've talked about or not. We want to start off talking about taxes and millage rates. On June 3rd, we adopted the FY26 general fund budget, which was forty-five million, seven hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And this is an increase of four point nine million, well, five million dollars over the FY25 budget. Of that five million, three point seven went to the sheriff's office with two point five of that related to SROs going into the schools. The VLC continues to have a strong commitment to public safety. Remaining one point three million was divided among the remaining constitutional officers as well as all the functions of the board of commissioners. Our total FY26 budget with all funds was eighty-three million, seven hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. This was also the first year of our new county level exemptions. As you remember, we took our general homestead from two thousand dollars up to five thousand. Also, anybody sixty-five and older automatically receive an assessment freeze. And if you're seventy-five and older, you received a ten thousand dollar additional homestead exemption. Also, when we asked y'all to pass those, we weren't aware of House Bill 581 was coming. So that was also active for the first time this year, and that's a floating homestead exemption. And that allows your evaluation on your assessment only to increase by the rate of inflation as determined by the revenue department. Based on that, there are two hundred and eighty-seven, two hundred and eighty-seven million dollar increase in exemptions for the twenty twenty-five taxed year digest. The board commissioner set our county rate at four point one eight four mills. For incorporated areas, five point one five four. This represents the fifth year of a millage role of a millage reduction and the fourth consecutive year of a full millage rollback. Next, we're going to talk about some, some of the park projects going on. We're going to start with Heritage Park. We're in the value engineering portion of that. What we're looking at doing is adding an arena, improving the footing in those arenas, water sources and also fencing upgrades. We're looking at improvement to the trails and also investigating the possibility of separating bikes and horses on those trails as well. We'll be adding parking and public restrooms as well. That'll be coming out of our capital fund for those improvements. Oconee Veteran Park Tennis, that bid is posted. We had a pre-bid meeting and got a lot of really good questions that we didn't, we needed some more time to digest. So we've extended that schedule by four weeks, but we anticipate opening bids on October thirtieth. Will be the bid close date, and that's a SPOLOSH twenty-one funded project. Wendell and Betty Dawson Park, working on the infrastructure now that's needed in order to decommission the LES. Our engineering is in full steam ahead on the fields, stormwater, internal roadways, intersections, and getting pad ready for a gymnasium. Right now, the gym is in concept phase. Right now, we're looking at, our goal is to have eight full basketball courts, which is translates into sixteen volleyball and, of course, sixteen half courts. We'll be getting construction estimates as we get into the engineering and, and they'll be presented to the board. We'll make decisions on how to move forward there. Site plan, if we can pop that up. Site plan has been tweaked since the last time you've seen it. It's been tweaked several times, actually. Traffic flow internal and also access points have changed. And that's based on us bringing in traffic planners to look at the flow and make sure we don't end up with some problems that exist today at some other parks. We also moved the gym location. It was out toward the front and that's been moved toward the side there, you can see. If we, if we do the sixteen, or excuse me, the eight full courts, that's going to be a hundred thousand square foot building and we just didn't think, a hundred thousand square feet of brick showing on the entrance to the park was good. So it's been moved over and now it'll kind of frame up the central area there. Thank you. Right now, we're also working on the operational costs of the park. And that'll be broken down between the field operations and then whatever the operations of the gymnasium will be. Our goal is going to be to offset some of that cost with sports tourism component to the park. So this is kind of a new endeavor on our end. This, this will be funded. The fields are funded through capital and SPOLOSH twenty-one. And then we'll have to, once we get some pricing on the gym, make some decisions. That'll be presented to the board once we get closer to some real numbers. All right now, we'll talk about some road projects. We'll talk about the county project search, which Snowsmill Lane Creek Roundabout is substantially complete. We have some final striping to do as well as some landscape on that center island. New High Shoals at Union Church Road, utility relocation is underway now. As soon as that's done, they'll start moving dirt for the actual roundabout. Assendale at Colin Ferry Roundabout, right away negotiations are underway at this time. Coal Springs at Snowsmill and Acoff Road is in concept design. More, more sport at Lane Creek is currently in utility coordination. So we've got a general plan and all the utilities are looking at what their impact will be to them. State Route fifty-three at Coal Springs and Clock Filter is also in concept development. Got a new signal replacement going on at Atlanta Highway and Burson Avenue in Bogart. And there we're just waiting on some final right of way with the railroad to get that done. And then Miller's Lake and Jenny's Mill is complete. We have some joint projects going on with DOT. The first one is State Route fifty-three at Snowsmill and Rocky Breach. That is under construction and on schedule to complete in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. Also Malcolm Bridge, a race church at State Route fifty-three. Right of way negotiations are complete and we're just working on closing those out. And then GDOT can start their process to get the bids going. Clock Felter Road at Barber Creek is on schedule to be completed at the end of the calendar year. Mars Hill Road, or excuse me, Experiment Station red winding from Butler's Crossing to the four forty-one bypass. Again, eighteen months left on that. They're supposed to be done by the end of the, they're saying the fourth quarter this year will be complete. They are working on final asphalt coatings and that should help a lot. Once they get that complete, they'll just be doing striping and clean up at that point. GDOT projects in Oconee County, we got these Jimmy Daniel, Verger Langford, No Coney Connector interchange. Construction's already started at Jimmy Daniel Road. They're saying twenty twenty-eight is the estimated completion year. Four forty-one from Morgan County to Bishop, they're showing a twenty twenty-eight construction. I'm anticipating that's going to be pushed out some more from what I'm hearing, but right now they're still showing twenty twenty-eight construction. Bishop Bypass, there's no time on that being listed. We've got some indication they'll start talking about design on that in twenty twenty-nine. Dows Mill Road, Dows Mill Extension Interchange showing construction in twenty twenty-six. McNuts Creek at State Route three sixteen is showing twenty twenty-seven. There is an open house at Prince Avenue on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, from five to seven. GDOT will have some information up there and be GDOT will have some information up there and be available to ask questions, so you can ask them questions. Mars Hill Road cul-de-sac was twenty thirty. Julian Drive is still showing great separation bridge in twenty thirty as well. Three sixteen at the Tin Loop, right where the, you come off the exit now, you got the Waffle House there. They're looking at doing a whole new interchange there at some point in twenty thirty-two. Watkinsville Bypass has been awarded for design. We have not seen a final concept nor have they had any open houses yet, so we would expect to see those hopefully pretty soon because they've been having contact and property owners and doing some investigating about where to place that road. We do have money in May courts in the twenty twenty-eight to twenty fifty-one timeframe, so once the design is done, there is money for construction. Final widening of Experiment Station from the four forty-one bypass up to Main Street is basically on the shelf. We don't know when that's going to come back up. The bypass for fifteen is taking priority over that one. Sure, I believe all the paving on seventy-eight is complete, so they got kind of challenging for a while. Last thing I got is we're, we're planning to ask the voters for a continuation of our SPOLOST in May of twenty twenty-six during the primary. So over the next few months, we'll be getting some potential projects together for presentation to the board commissioners. We'll be trying to get the public engagement as we produce these lists as well. And right now, we're working on the budget of what we're going to project to bring in. SPOLOST is very important to, to our operation. We anticipate with the next SPOLOST, we'll be able to pay, pay off OVP debt. We fund, we fund all our farmland preservation through SPOLOST, fire rescue and medical equipment. Historic preservation structure, historic structures, the Eagle Tavern and the schoolhouse out at Heritage are maintained through funds through there. Our public safety radio system is due for some upgrades. It's going to be very expensive, so that'll be something we'll need. And all our sheriff's office vehicles are funded through SPOLOST. Anybody else?
No, it's just a lot of good things. I will mention this because I've spent a lot of time with the Dawson Park, the concepts pushing it. I was out at OVP and Herman Michael Saturday. And there is a lot of folks that get those parks. And I think what we're proposing, what John's mentioned, it will be something I think that this county will be very proud of. Just to give you an idea, that, that building, when, when we talk about the sixteen courts for volleyball, that's, that's mostly female. They get that. And I think there's a lot of good female volleyball teams and programs in this part of the state. But I, I think it's not that we wouldn't do something with programming at Parks and Rec, but anybody who's been following the county commission over years, and there were some times where we had some difficult times with school board. We, hopefully we got past that, but their programs will benefit immensely by this project. And where they can at tournaments and bring in very good teams from maybe through the south. So I think, I think this is going to be a big, really big deal. Now, these guys grew up here. I didn't, but when I got here in nineteen eighty, I cut the grass out at Bogart on that little baseball field many a time. And, you know, that was at a time period when the county didn't have a lot of money. They just flat didn't. And so we did what we could with what we had. Didn't do much complaining because it wasn't, he wanted to complain. But I think if, if the public will support extending that SPOLOST referendum, that one penny will go and do a lot of good things for the people of this county. I mean, when I, I think about the young people and, you know, some of these sports, I'm, I'm, I'm past that. You know, I could go watch somebody. But I think we had the opportunity to really market our kids, show other people what we're about. And if you support families, you know, that's, that's a strong commitment by the government. And I think this will not be a cheap endeavor by any stretch, but I think it will really show people what Oconee County is about. If, if they didn't know, they're going to see. And it'll be young people and their families benefiting by it. Not, you know, bureaucratic here and there. I think this government is committed to be able to do something that people will be proud of. So I, I hope y'all will spread. When it goes to the public, you get people out the boat. Get them out the boat. The kids or the families are gathering and that's just a good thing.
I guess the only thing is we're in the information gathering on the historical items in the county and different individuals. So if any of you have anybody in, in your family that would like to participate in telling some of their stories, let us know something about the county or, you know, some story that you've got that relates to the government, or it could be, you know, about anything else really. We are working on that.
Visitor Bureau team is kind of heading that project up, trying to get some video of what happened in the past. I missed some opportunities with my grandparents because I remember them talking about people fussing because people were driving, riding their horse too fast through downtown Watkinsville. So speeding's always been a problem in Watkinsville, so. With that, we'll open it up to, to the community. So if you want to ask us anything or make any statements, come on up.
I'm Wanda Stitt-Gotis. I live at ten sixty-one West Canyon Creek Court. And I realize you work for Oconee County and not the Georgia Department of Transportation, so I'm going to jump in with both feet. Whenever we have the kinds of projects that are anticipated for the three sixteen corridor between the connector and on west, there are all kinds of stories that abound, one of which we've heard was that that intersection at three sixteen and the connector would be closed for forty-five days. Do you have any clarification about that thing that I've heard?
No, not, not at this time. So there's been different versions that came out. And they're still working on the final design and, and phasing plan on that, so once they have that, they'll let us know and we'll try to give you plenty of warning.
Okay.
So I think the latest version shows it staying open. Just limited closures are in different time.
Okay, thank you. And as always, representing the Oconee Area Resource Council, we're always so grateful for the support that you provide for us. Thank you.
Dan McGee, Locklum Circle. I will pay for picture Chuck mowing that lawn forty-five years ago. I want to see proof of Chuck on that. Big guy on Little Riding Mower, I'm sure.
Push mower.
Oh, I gotta see proof of that.
Had to line the field and clean it up after.
Got to be pictures. First of all, congratulations to our parks director, got the USTA tennis grant. Very real hard grant. I'm familiar with it. A lot of time and effort on that. So a gold star to get seventy-five. It's easy to get twenty-five, a little hard to get fifty, but get seventy-five is a gold star. At the IDA meeting, talk about sport tourism. I know there's money in the IDA accounts from the post office sale and that money is to be spent on sport tourism. I have some expertise in that. Lisa does. I hope it would be transferred where our county manager, whoever would have more oversight. I don't think the money in there, I don't think the IDA, it's really not in their mission to spend money specifically on sport tourism. It's a different world manufacturing and commercial versus sport tourism. That money can be spent on that. It's great. I would just rather have county manager and the parks director have some oversight spending. Hasn't been a lot of turnover for IDA. They don't really have a lot of meetings. Mr. Waller's been on there forever, maybe some regular meetings and, and new members on there, but that money can be spent on that. That'd be great. Chuck's been talking about sport tourism forever. He's right about girls volleyball. It is a hot sport. Boys volleyball is actually creeping up there. Coney High School just started Boys Volleyball Club. So eventually there'll be boys tournaments too, but this area can absolutely attract girls, large girls tournaments need hotels. So they're staying here in the county and not in Athens. And I think there's some hotels on the docket, but if you have the hotels, you have the restaurants can absolutely attract tournaments. And these are not one day tournaments. These are two, two and a half day tournaments. So a lot of potential there. So all for the sport tourism. Hopefully there are meetings about it, maybe advisory committee or whatever, but there are some things we can attract. We're, we're an attractive market for maybe girls volleyball, for soccer, maybe not as much for, for baseball where you need just a huge amount of fields and there's so much maintenance for, for the travel baseball tournaments. Last thing is, you know, I've talked to you all about Earschnell and GDOT. I would just hope the intersection of Bishop's Crossing, heavily used by not just runners and walkers, but by schoolchildren, middle school kids going to Dunkin' Donuts, the ones who live down Mars Hill, I'm not sorry, Hog Mountain Walk to School. My kid occasionally walks to school in that intersection. That intersection should be a priority. That needs to get done. I know they have a lot of work to do the rest of it, but they can finish that intersection. I cross it. I go for run walks, but I worry about my kid walking to school. The middle schoolers, they're not always paying attention. They're on their phone, earplugs, earbuds or whatever, but that intersection can be done. I've, I've given up complaining about Earschnell. They've been, right now we can't make left turn out of our neighborhood. It's progress, so be with it. We can deal with it for a while, but they can county talk to some of Earschnell. Let's prioritize that pedestrian crossing for the school kids and other runners and walkers. I've actually crossed that to go your new trail down Hog Mountain. But it's tough now. They've really, they didn't do anything for like two months of summer. There's nothing done around public in that intersection. I'm glad they finally picked up the pace, but anything you guys can do to prioritize safety there, much appreciated. I fussy you guys all the time. The stuff with Dawson Park, OVP, all the park stuff is great, so thank you for doing a great job with that.
Any else? Awesome. I bet it's been suggested we serve popcorn. We'll, we'll see what we can do about that next time. We'll be hanging around a few minutes after. If you got something you want to ask or tell us, we'll be happy to talk with you. Thank you for coming out.